Everybody, I'd like to call the meeting to the Maple Plain Planning Commission meeting for July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. First thing on the agenda, we were going to say the Pledge of Allegiance, so please all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I am going to take a moment to slide over because I don't want to wave out my knee here, so we're going to do that. For a moment. Sorry about that. Yeah, rubbing knees. Okay. First thing, like I said last time, is everybody bring your mics closer to you so I can hear you better, because I am reviewing the videos and I did have a little trouble hearing, but was much better than previous meetings, so thank you for that. Okay? Not so bad with a bad ear, okay? Is there a motion to, the next thing is adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda tonight?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second the motion to adopt the agenda.
All right, we're going to go through this real quick, aren't we?
Can I have an all in favor?
All in favor, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is the approval for the minutes for the June second one. Is there any discussion or corrections or additions before we take that vote, please?
I didn't find anything.
Me neither.
A grant.
Is that a grant deal?
That's that M B O.
All right, all right, thank you, all right.
That's a first grant.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda, as we're flying through this real quick, is the public hearing, and so Mark, if you are ready, I will turn it over. Oh, Clarissa, I'm sorry.
Could we back up and do a motion for the minutes, please?
I'm sorry, thank you for keeping me on my toes. I told you I would need it. So, can I have a motion for the approval for the minutes, please?
I'll make that motion to adopt, to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Are we all set now?
No, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Anybody opposing?
No, aye, okay. Again, I will just say right now, I am having trouble hearing out of the left ear, so I apologize at that, okay? Mark, can you go ahead now with your stuff?
I'm ready to go.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead anyway, I don't know why. So, the request before you night is a request for a variance to allow an internally illuminated sign for the new commercial building at sixteen seventy-five Spring Avenue. The owner, Ann Rossin, asked the city to consider granting a variance to allow an internally illuminated sign for the mixed-use downtown zoning district. The property itself is sixteen seventy-five Spring Avenue. It's zoned mixed-use downtown. It's guided by the city's comprehensive plan as mixed-use. The property is about twelve thousand square feet in size. As you recall, the city considered and then ultimately granted site plan approval for a new commercial building to be located on the sixteen seventy-five Spring Avenue property. At the end of last year, that building is up. If anybody's been by there, it looks really nice.
Looks nice.
And so, with that, the owners are looking to install signage on the building. As some of you on the planning commission have considered this before, some of you not, the city has kind of two places where we speak to signage in our ordinances. One is directly in the city's ordinance for signage that is kind of contained within, and then we have contained as a reference, a set of design guidelines. Those are adopted, though, by reference, so that means that they're applicable to the zoning districts. So, with that, the city adopted downtown design guidelines, which gives more context, more definition to kind of the city's design intent, the city's desire for kind of certain architecture, certain landscaping, certain signage, that kind of all go together. And so those guidelines essentially become ordinance by a reference in the city's existing zoning ordinance. With that, those guidelines do not permit internally illuminated signage in the mixed-use downtown district. And so, any kind of signage that would come forward to the city would have to be illuminated in a different manner. There are different ways to illuminate signage, not just within the sign lettering or the sign casing itself. The city has considered and does have within the city both externally illuminated, so think gooseneck-type lighting, or some sort of up-cast lighting on the signage, or the city does also allow what's called backlit, or sometimes in the industry halo-lit signage, which in some ways is very similar to an internally illuminated sign, but does cast a little bit different type of light out of that. And so with that, the city has a provision. The applicant is proposing to construct a sign that would be internally illuminated. So there are components of the sign that would be individual letters, the American Family logo, kind of the hat roof bar would be internally illuminated, and then a portion of the insurance, which is underneath the American Family sign, would be internally illuminated. That would be internally illuminating as proposed with LED letters. And so, this type of lighting, because it's prohibited by the design guidelines and the sign ordinance, is something that would require the city to consider granting a variance. There is some history to this in the city. In two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty, the city considered and processed variances that were approved for three new businesses to have internally illuminated signs on the fifteen, fifty-one fifty-nine Main Street building. That building is the building that's kind of next to Blackwater, in between Blackwater and the post office. It's a office, kind of office retail-type building. And at the time that the first variance came in, it was noted that there were other internally illuminated signs on that building, and so calling one out or taking one out and having that kind of change or stand out from the other ones would make the building look, there wouldn't be like, there wouldn't be a consistency to the signage. Ultimately, that happened twice. The third time that it came forward in two thousand and twenty, we discussed in more depth the sign ordinance again and the design guidelines. And, you know, anytime you start getting multiple variances on a same issue, you've got to ask yourself, is the sign, is the ordinance still the right ordinance for the city, rather than just continuing to grant variances from that? In two thousand and twenty, both the planning commission and the city council confirmed that the ordinance and the design guidelines were, in fact, what the city wanted to see moving forward for signage in the downtown mixed-use district, and ultimately did approve the two thousand and twenty variance request, but with that added a condition to the request saying that it was essentially notifying the business owner, the building owner at fifty-one fifty-nine, that that, that that person should notify any potential new tenant, that it would be strongly discouraged and likely not approved to apply for a variance moving forward for any additional internal illuminated signs, and that they should let the potential or future tenants know what the ordinance is, so that they can decide how they want to move forward with renting the space or not renting it based on, on the sign provisions. So, that, that two thousand and twenty variance did include a condition specifically to that. I will say that the city also has had quite a few sign package or sign application requests in the mixed-use districts, mixed-use districts including the Gateway District, and so I included those in the packet. I'm not going to go through every one. I tried to give you a little context just to show you kind of what we've seen come in, whether or not they've, you know, asked for variance or been compliant, or been able to meet the current standards or the current guidelines. And you can see that, you know, out of the approximately almost ten sign applications that we've seen in the last, you know, five, six years, most of those have come in compliant. But I also wanted to point out what kind of signage they were, so whether it was a monument sign, a wall sign, a pylon sign, and then how they were illuminated, whether internally, externally, or that kind of backlit halo lighting. And you can see we have a mixture of all types that we've considered and looked at. So, with that, we also looked at this sign in particular, just as it relates to other standards of the city, and so you can see the maximal, the maximum allowable sign area is fifteen percent of the wall area where the sign will be located. In this particular case, you know, there's quite a bit of square footage that could be utilized for signage on this building. The proposed sign area is thirty-three and a half square feet for the larger sign, and then eight square feet for that black sign with the name and then phone number, noting that that is not an internally, or that's not an illuminated sign as it is proposed. So, with that, there'd be approximately forty-two square feet, which falls well within the square footage for the type of sign, or for the type of wall sign that is being proposed. What is being requested of the planning commission is consideration for granting a variance. The city does have criteria for granting a variance. Ultimately, you have to find that there's a hardship, that the ordinance is causing some undue hardship to the applicant, that isn't, isn't something that was created by them, and is not economic in any way, shape, or form. So, you'd have to have some other kind of factor that would, would need to be considered, and then ultimately, a planning commission would need to make a finding that that criteria is being satisfied by the applicant. I did note, you know, the, the design guidelines have been in place for almost fifteen years in the city. There was quite a bit of public process for those, right? So that's one thing that I noted. I wasn't a part of any of that process, but I know that the last time we talked about it, it was noted, I think Stephen actually may have said something, but there was, there was the Minnesota Design Team, there was quite a few public meetings where we brought the public in to provide feedback. There was a lot of, a lot of discussion, a lot of community involvement in creating and establishing those standards. And so, if you were to think about changing it, or think about granting this variance, I would recommend that the city step back and actually look at your standard. If it, if it's something that we're going to continue to, to, you know, grant variances from, you should probably look at that then and say, is it the right standard anymore? And then decide, you know, do we need to kind of re-involve the community in deciding where we are today, noting that it was a while ago that those were approved. The city's intent in those standards, if you look at and read, is the city very much wants to have a certain style to the downtown, a certain architectural, and it all revolves around, if you read, read those guidelines and kind of that intent, small-town character, right? And that can be different for different people. But ultimately, this idea that Maple Plain kind of recreates what it used to have in kind of a vibrant, active downtown, and within that, you think about things that kind of helped create that environment. Signage and lighting and landscaping and architecture are all elements of that, that when they go together, I think you, you know, you try to, to get to whatever that vision is for the community. I did note, and the applicant did provide some narrative on, you know, they have some corporate sign requirements. We have heard that previously. I mean, that's fairly common that, you know, either, you know, if there's a corporate identity or there is some kind of like a franchise, you know, and then they have that corporate identity. I will note, I mean, in doing this for a long time, companies do have those standards, but many communities have their own standards that don't allow, you know, kind of company standards, so we could, we could point out, you know, lots and lots. I kind of always look at the, probably the biggest corporate identity business in America that we all know is McDonald's, right? They have a very, very specific, and I can point out a hundred McDonald's stores that have zero signage because communities don't allow it, and they're in existence, right? So we could go down and you could look, there's lots, lots of locations. Lots of times it is in downtowns, right? It is in kind of specialized business districts or in areas where you're trying to create something different, a different standard, certainly not, you know, on an interstate highway or something like that, where there's, there's zero visibility to the front door or something like that. So, with that, I'm really looking for direction from planning commission. You've got a request for variance. I've noted that we've talked about it before. Last time we talked about direction was given, kind of, we want to keep the standard. That was two thousand and twenty, so we're a couple of years following that. But I would ask planning commission for direction and feedback, certainly on the standard itself and then on the application as presented to the city. So, with that, happy to answer any questions. And I'm going to try to switch computers, see if I can get the sign up. You all have that right in front of you, though, right?
A couple of questions.
Yes, thank you.
A couple of questions, thank you. Great to meet, who do we have here? Who's here?
So, I'm Ann Ronstein. This is my husband Kevin.
Nice, great to meet you.
Good to meet you.
Good to meet you guys. Beautiful building, nice job with all of that. Couple of questions that I sort of jotted as we were going. One of them is, during permitting in the construction, is signage not one of the things that gets discussed at that point or approved or can be done?
Yeah.
Or I'm wondering why we address it.
Technically, it should be, but it doesn't always get brought up. One of the things we look at is, we say more specifically in a multi-tenant building, that there should be a sign package approved with a multi-tenant. This is a single tenant, so in this case, you can just come in and ask for, or you can just make an application for signage, and it would be considered on its own merit. If it doesn't meet the ordinance, then you're going to see it. If it meets it, we'd issue a permit.
Sometimes after the fact, it's sort of, you leave yourself, there's some risk there, you know, depending on what's going on. The other question I had was, you know, how many tenants are in this building?
Just one, right.
Just one tenant, and that's what it'll always be? Okay, so we don't have to do what we did on the other building where it's going to keep showing up to do that. Are there any other options available, American Family, for signage? You know, this one's backlit, do they have other styles? You talked about McDonald's, they have forty different ways to go about it, or other...
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, that'd be something.
American Family's not a small corporation, I would assume.
They follow a model agency platform, so they try and keep the corporate...
Just to stop, do you want to step up to the podium, please?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry.
So, we follow a model agency platform. What that means is that they try and have consistency among all agencies that are choosing to follow that. So with this, there are no other options other than the sign that we've proposed.
So, if we, if it didn't get approved, what do you do?
We have no signage.
Again, I'm going to go back to permitting and constru, you go like, wow, you know?
Yeah. And I will be the first to say, like, going back to some of the comments earlier, I was part of that design fifteen years ago as part of the chamber. The city was totally different fifteen years ago. We had a gas station, we had a city hall, which is downtown, which was great, because that made it walkable, that made it shoppable, that made it a destination place that people wanted to go to, and I could see that if we were redesigning that. However, this building is not within that quadrant that we had focused on at that time. This is on the outskirts facing Highway twelve, not within a walkable, shoppable area affecting other residences or businesses.
Perfect.
I will agree with you on that, that our idea was to have people walking, and where you're located, there's nothing, and we don't have any cute little retail to walk to. If it was cute little retail and you wanted to walk, yeah.
Right.
But you're in a difficult spot, and you're with nothing. Your competition is maybe across twelve, and I don't know what's in there right now, if they even have any signs.
Well, I would say our competition is actually on the road down further, of which has been granted variance for their signage.
I agree. But I think, I think what we, when we did this design team, this is not what we had in mind. Our, our idea was cute little retail.
Right.
And what we've gotten is not cute real retail. We've gotten office.
If anything, the whole area has left unchanged.
Correct.
I haven't been, I wasn't a part, I wasn't, you know, in, I've only been in the area just to see friends, and that was, you know, while I was in high school, and this area is very identical to what it was.
It's worse.
So, right, yeah.
It's worse.
Identical, if not worse.
We do not have a gas station. We do not have city hall.
Right. And so, my point in bringing that up is that that was a great idea at that time, and everybody was on board for it to create that downtown feel, but we're fifteen years into that, and if that was actually going to come to fruition, it should have come to fruition by this time. Fifteen years later, again, I'm not in that quadrant that we had focused on at that time. I'm outside of that, facing, facing twelve.
And could you tell me what building, I drove by it tonight getting here?
Sure.
Because I didn't want to risk the train situation. So, could you tell me, what is right across the street? Is that the schoolhouse or is that the car place?
No.
Or am I off?
Yep, so we're just a little bit further down. Do you know where Minnesota Beef Council is?
Well, I know where you are, but what is directly across from you, honey?
Wensong Realty and Nutrition Dynamic.
Oh, that one, okay.
Is that?
Okay.
I might be off on that name.
Something like that. Okay, thank you.
There's nothing retail over there.
There is not.
We have no retail in the downtown. Well, apparently, we have two new ones. How many of you have been in them?
I have.
I will plead even guilty. I usually do go, but I have not made it, and they have not asked for a sign.
And that was the other thing I was going to propose with that, with the signs that have come through. Personally, talking to the businesses that are here that have those signs up, the reason they haven't applied for a variance is because it's so expensive to do so, and some of these businesses do not have the cash flow to be able to write that check to apply for variance on a hope that it's going to be approved.
I think one of the things it does is it shines a little bit of a light on, you know, the evolution, revolution of our sign ordinance, which it seems like every other year we go through this with some business in trying to do something. There's established a criteria, and I think you kind of touched on that, that's within the bylaws of the city, that's, ordinances of the city, that there's four or five things that have to be met to be able to do it. So we either ignore that, or we modify that, or we do something to catch up with the times. I agree, it's a great business, and I don't necessarily have any problem with the signage. But, it's going back to what's been established as our guidelines and what is acceptable or not acceptable. It sounds like we have letters out there to the fifty-one ninety, whatever that building is over there, saying, no more boys. Well, this would open that up again, right? So it'd be, or no more boys and girls.
Well, we don't necessarily have letters. We, that was the condition, right?
We sent a letter.
Was, okay, we did send the letter.
Yeah, and they were aware. I mean, they, the owner of that building actually didn't disagree. He, he was fine with that.
One of the reasons to allow the variances, if we didn't, it would create a hardship for the business, correct? Like, so it...
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're talking about, you know, is there, is there a hardship? I mean, I, I don't know American Family specifically, but I've worked with thousands of businesses over twenty-five years, and they will allow a variance to their signage, right? So they would allow, you know, like I said, I mean, so it's more about, you know, is this in keeping with what you guys see as the vision for Maple Plain, in my opinion, than it is, you know, specifically about American Family? Because you've got a bigger issue than, you know, the city should really address. I mean, think about things like, you know, you talk about there's no other retail, but we, we identify the Highway twelve corridor as not having kind of neon signage, right? So that was, that was what the city, a lot of cities do this, right? It's very common, right? I mean, if you go around this area, like Watertown, for example, it has no illuminated signage. Victoria, no illuminated signage, right? So they allow the backlit, or they allow the, the external lit. I think one of the nice signs in Maple Plain right now is Iron Exchange, and that's an externally illuminated sign that came in and complied, you know, with the ordinance. But it would really be, it's up to this, you know, it's up to the city, it's up to appointed and elected. Does, does internally illuminated meet kind of what the vision of the city is for the Highway twelve corridor? Do you want that, or do you want something different? Fifteen years ago, like Ann said, it was, the vision was small-town. I would say it hasn't come to fruition, which doesn't mean it's not, right? We're working really hard to try to get a downtown redevelopment project off the ground, which would kind of come in under these guidelines, but, yeah, I mean, it's up to the city to decide, is it, is this ordinance still the right size for, for Maple Plain, and does the vision of that kind of small-town, signs with gooseneck lighting or external illumination, is that in keeping with what people in, in Maple Plain want to see for their, for the Highway twelve corridor? Or, it would be hard to differentiate your downtown, you know, one block over or a block and a half over from this block because we have it all the same. Now, if we think that there's a separate kind of district down here on the West End, I mean, we could, we should look at that, because that's, you know, we're going to talk about the same thing when we see redevelopment, you know, with design standards and things like that, but, so.
Is there a big difference in the look? I mean, what is our, why don't we like the internal lit?
I think in the past, it's a really bright and can be a little overpowering. I feel like it's outside of Maple Plain, but the Holiday Gas Station lights, signs I find annoying, like the big bright blue, it's distracting, and it's hard for eyes to focus, especially at night. I think something like was proposed is a lot softer lit, even though it's internally lit.
And I had included a sign from Delano that is identical to this, and if you look at it, the actual lights that are the backlight for the trees underneath are brighter than what the sign is on the building. You can modify the brightness with that, with the different bulbs that you put into it. You guys have seen that building. I don't want anything that's in-your-face stark. It's a soft building, it's welcoming, it just, I need to let people know that's where we're at.
Madam Chair, if I may, just food for thought, as we're, as we're thinking about this, we do have, we will likely have another sign application soon for Ann's former building. So I think there's some thought to be had there, you know, if we're, if we're granting it for Ann, are we, would we also grant it for that other building?
I understand.
Which is closer to our proposed downtown redevelopment and such. So, and it's also on the highway, so it's a little harder to differentiate between, you know what I mean?
So how many feet between your old place and your new place there? We're talking a block or two blacks?
Three blocks.
Three blacks?
Correct. And there is a sidewalk that leads up to that building, connecting it to the Main Street, to the old building, not my new one.
So, in the next fifteen years, will there be a downtown situation that would go from your old building to the new building? I mean, are we proposing something? I mean, we're proposing something over in the big vacant square first, and if we were talking about what we were wanting to do there, if I remember correctly, the lower level would be the little stores, the little quaint places, the walking places, the ice cream shops and stuff like that, and up above... And up above, second floor, would be places for people to live. I assume that's what we're still thinking about?
We're trying.
And that, that's that whole stretch, right? So all the way to Pioneer, I mean, all the way to the fire station, right? And I actually think you're going to see it go kind of from the outsides in, right? I think you could see something on the fire station property that starts to become retail, kind of closing back in then as you go to the middle. I would think about it, though, I, for me, I wouldn't think about it as the little, one little cute area and then everything else, because you've really got the whole Highway Twelve corridor, right?
Okay.
Just for example, we had a sign permit last month for the car place across the street, and they, they originally had talked about doing internally illuminated sign, and we said that, that wasn't the ordinance. They came back with no lighting on that one sign, right? They said, we don't need it. And then they, so the schoolhouse has a sign package that would not be internally illuminated. That's right across the street. So I would think just, you know, broader as that corridor and what is the city's vision for that. Similarly, you know, when we're talking about like Iron Exchange, we're talking about, there's a retail space next to them. We just, you know, proved a sign for the, the smoke shop. Not a, not a great sign, but if that would have been internally illuminated, I think even worse, as far as what that would have looked like. So I think about it, you know, kind of how does that whole corridor look? Because that's what you see when you drive through Maple Plain. It's not just, you know, a one-block area.
Okay.
In your experience in other cities, are there any instances where they have lumen requirements for an internally lit that would keep it like a softer, that would have a similar feel to?
Not on the, not on the LED specifically. I haven't seen that. A lot of dynamic signage, so when you're talking about changeable copy, where it's got, you know, like a, you know, change, the sign changes, we do limit the kind of output on that a lot of times in ordinance. It's an interesting question on, you know, how does that work for these signs?
Yeah, there's a way that we could allow it to a certain degree, but not get like an obnoxiously bright sign, but it still meets kind of the, the overall intent with an internal solution. Sliding technology has changed a ton in fifteen years.
Yeah, and I, I don't know if anybody's looked at, you know, the halo or backlit signage. It's, it's, it costs more on the sign, right? So it's an economic thing, but it really does a lot of the same things, but without that kind of alter-bright intensity of the color. So it, it backlight's off the wall, which then, you know, has a little bit different cast, which I think people associate with a little bit different image. That, that's what a lot of cities have done, right? They've allowed that halo or backlit, which we do, right? We have Liquor Depot is a halo or backlit sign. So is that the smoke shop. Those are, that, that's another alternative that, you know, some people have chosen to go down rather than going through a variance. And I think it, it provides a very similar, but just a little bit less intense, um, light outcast or output.
So I did request an estimate for the halo lit and also proposed that in. It was actually more cost-effective than the sign, but it was rejected.
Rejected by American Family?
Correct. So I did look at our other options before we did this, to see if there was another option to do this, before we move forward with the variance, the request for it.
So American Family is saying you have to have an internally lit sign.
If we're following the model agency platform.
Okay.
And they don't have a variance process? I'm just curious.
Yeah, that was my follow-up.
The city denied, and I want to do the halo.
If I go to Madison and ask?
You don't want to do that.
All right.
I, I'm just asking, like Bremer, I just had one Bremer bank before they got sold, and they, they ultimately agreed to the halo or backlit, but I don't know what their process was.
Mark, let me have you review something to help me. I, I'm trying to figure out a way to jump on this and say good, no. There's criteria, and if you could review that, the boxes that have to get checked that are currently established, right? For us to be able to have it meet. The other thing too is, it sounds like we have a couple of businesses across the street that have been denied. And so it's like, where's that?
Variance denied, just meaning their sign application was denied.
Okay.
And it was, there was noted that they had either.
Based on internally lit or based on?
And that's not directly across the street from us. That is three blocks down from where we're at.
So as the, as it sits right now, what is the threshold?
So it's, you, you've got to establish a, a practical difficulty, right? So that, there is leeway in that. It can't be economic, right? And so it's got to be some other practical difficulty. You, you certainly could try to establish the corporate identity as, you know, being the, the difficulty that the applicant has, you know, kind of a requirement.
How would that play out for later on for other businesses that come to us then? Are we going to see more and more of?
She's also in a very difficult spot. She has no access to twelve. She has visibility, but trying to figure out how to get there.
And that's not a cul-de-sac or you can't?
Correct.
It is a cul-de-sac, yeah.
Correct. And because of that property size, it can't be assigned detached from the building. So our signage is.
Has to be on the building.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Actually, I would prefer it on the building than have it not.
Agreed.
For my two cents, I like what I see. What I'm scared of is what might come ahead to the commission later on, saying, well, you said, you said, you said. And then, like Mark said, maybe this is outdated, you know? I do like the goose bottle, or goose lighting that we have on some of the buildings. I do like that. But if that doesn't work for you, you know, that, then that, that you are in the hardship there.
You are in the common, I mean, some of it's common sense, right? It's hard to factor in common sense into like an ordinance, but then the ordinance is what the ordinance is, and everybody has to sort of march to. And that's where I'm just struggling with, yeah, I want to, but, but, you know, give me something, somebody that says, yeah, this is, and why, you know? If we're going to do that, or let's change the damn ordinance.
Yeah, I, I, to me, that's the best solution, if, if that's the, the feel of the city, right? Then, because we're going to just get into a precedent. I know we say we don't set precedent, but we do, right? So if you grant this, it's going to be really hard to then say to somebody else.
Exactly.
And everybody's got a little bit, you know, different hardship. I mean, the other thing, where do you go with like the corporate? Do you need, you know, do you need the corporate, do you need a letter? Do you need, you know, do we need like the CEO of the, of the company to come and present, saying that they won't allow any other option? Because it could, I mean, anybody could say, well, my, my company said I can't do it otherwise, so. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, where do you stop that? And then how do you document it? How do you administer? I'm just saying, if it's not the right sign, if this is the right sign and everybody likes it, then, then change the ordinance. It makes it a lot easier, right?
But I think these
Then we.
guidelines were made fifteen years ago. Nothing has happened. Thirty years from now, when Annie maybe gets to retire, maybe something else will help happen in her building, and maybe two tenants take over and come in with a different sign ordinance or sign package. And you could go back. But in the meantime, she's stuck in the middle of nowhere. She's residential. One hundred, well.
She's not residential.
I mean, the Beef Council doesn't allow anybody in there, including the American Legion. All these people will not donate one cent to the city of Maple Plain. Annie is a great, she grew up in Maple Plain, she volunteers, she donates to everything.
And before Annie was her dad.
Correct.
So what would, so I'm in agreement, I think it makes sense that the sign should be there, but what's the best? Like, how do you go about changing the ordinance in?
Well, you had mentioned you're a part of a group. What was that term you used again?
She's in the Rotary.
The model agency platform.
Model agency. So is there, does that add benefit to your group, or what is the benefit versus not being a model agency? Because I did look at other cities, or at least other locations.
Yep.
And Spring Lake Park has a non-internally lit sign. Obviously, it sounds like they're just separate from everything, but it still fits the format of the, you know, American Family Insurance, the house and everything, so.
Yeah. So a model agency was created about five years ago to create consistency among the industry within American Family. So it could very well be that that sign is outside of that five years. And that is something that they review every year to make sure it's keeping up with the new standards and to keep up with what they want to portray as the company. So I personally would not go outside of the model agency because it does stay current and up to date. You know, as in any business, if you're not staying current and up to date, you're going to go out of business.
Is there an additional cost incurred to you because you're a part of that?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm an independent business owner choosing to be part of that, to follow it.
Using the LED has got to be environmentally friendly, does it not?
It is. It extends the longevity of the signs as well, the durability of these signs. So, for example, our old building, the beautiful yellow and green building, we kind of evolved through the years, right? We started with the wooden sign that was required, that chipped away, needed to be repainted. We repainted. We ended up with an internally lit sign, which was cracked out due to hail or any other objects coming at it, which now we're looking at this one. As I meet with businesses, I know the city is working really, really hard to expand businesses and drive business in here. This is one of the greatest frustrations that I hear when I'm meeting with businesses as part of the chamber. It is the sign. So it, I'm hoping that this helps the city and other businesses for everybody to look at it and reevaluate it and bring it up to current standards.
Unfortunately, Maple Plain does have a reputation, a bad reputation, of being hard to, to open a business in. And I think we need to change that.
And I think we're working to do that. We just need to work together on it. We need to understand where we're at today and today's environment and make sure that we're evolving with what's happening out there today. Fifteen years ago, something that's still in, that you're still making sure and enforced, is not keeping current. That's not evolving with where we're at. That's where it's becoming hard on the business end of it.
Yeah, that was the one thing I thought. I, there wasn't a date on the guidelines, so I was like, when did this occur? And then, you know, fifteen years ago, it's like, well, what have we been doing for all this time? You know, what, who was policing it? What was happening where just, you know, for fifteen years, nothing really changed, you know, so.
So Mark, if we were to update this code.
Yeah, what I would recommend is that you, you'd make a finding that the corporate identity is a hardship to the applicant, and you, then you'd move it with a recommendation to City Council, asking the council to direct the code to be amended.
Okay.
So it, it wouldn't necessarily tie this off, meaning that you wouldn't stall Anne's application. You would, you would consider that application, but recognize that you're doing it ba, on the basis that the ordinance gets amended, so you're not going to be, put your, not put yourself in a position to consider multiple variants.
So do the recommendation to update the ordinance for the entire city.
Correct. Update the sign ordinance, and that would then include the design guidelines, because they would get included.
I don't want to hold you up. You've got a lead time on your signage and all that thing, but if we're going down that path, she could be stalled for.
No, no, this would be a recommendation to approve, based on a hardship finding, that there's a corporate identity that needs to be maintained. That puts her in her, that puts her through to the council, but with the recommendation, you would recommend City Council direct Planning Commission and staff to review and consider an amendment to the sign ordinance.
At that time, if we do do that, can we put some, because I don't, in thirty years, I won't be here, okay? Maybe not even fifteen. But I don't want my kids or grandkids coming back to this town and say, well, this is where mom and dad grew up and brought us kids up and everything lit neon light, you know, like it's, I, I really don't want that. So I would, I truly feel that we need to update it, but I do think we should still have some super guidelines on it that we just don't become a rainbow in the sky, in the sky at night.
And I think that's something that you could look at, you know, your consideration on the, you know, kind of intensity of the light. There's a lot of different technology day that, that maybe we could consider and look at.
Like you said, didn't exist fifteen years ago or, you know, so.
Question related to the other, you know, basically the one building with the three. What, do we have record of why that was approved, or I think it made?
All of them were approved because there was existing users on a multi-tenant building, so rather than taking the multi-tenant building and starting to have one type of lighting or another. Now, I will say, when we did the fifteen-hundred Howard, the, the former MPFC, we made that consideration, right? So they came forward with a sign package that complied on the new Iron Exchange. Since that time, we've had another application for Forkless, and they also complied, right? So they've got externally illuminated signage, they have gooseneck lighting. So that building's starting to change, and that was the discussion at the last Planning Commission was, we got to break the cycle, so if we still think the ordinance is the right ordinance, which in 2020, that was the question, right? So they said, but we don't want to keep doing it. So let's break it, and then from here forward, change it back. Let's start getting what we originally had anticipated.
Is there any, would the sign be lit all night, or is it turned off at a certain time?
It would turn off during the day, so it has a cell on it to identify when it's dusk and then shuts off at dawn.
Is there any ways to like, say like midnight or something, it could turn off till a certain time in the morning, then in the winter, obviously when the, you know, your high traffic times, like four o'clock on.
Keep in mind, that's my only form of identifying that building. And so part of the advertisement is drive-by traffic. So I, I could do that. If I had to, would I like to do that? No. But if that's the thing holding us back from approving this, I'd be willing to work with you on that.
Anybody else have any other comments?
It might be worth it to request a letter
Okay.
from the corporation. That's just my thought.
Mm-hmm.
So.
I have to agree with you on that. I think it would, it would give us some standard that we can fall back and say, hey, we did what we felt was needed. We want to move Anne and her hubby forward on this, but, you know, we have to set precedence on what's going on, Anne, so.
So that pushes us back another month. So if I get that letter, then I have to meet again a month from now, and we're hoping to open this on August first.
It would just be a condition of the. It would just be a condition of the approval.
Okay, to have that letter, okay.
I would like to make that motion to approve with the council looking at the guidance, however you worded that.
So it'd be a motion to approve based on the hardship of not being able to meet corporate ident, corporate identity, corporate requirements? And then a recommendation to city council, asking council to consider directing staff and planning commission to amend the sign ordinance relating to internal illumination? And then are you including a condition on corporate letter, just kind of confirming that it's?
I think we should.
That's fine.
Okay. That's your motion.
And I'm sure you understand that, right?
Grant's over there, yes. Grant's good. I got it.
Can you clarify the difference between hardship, practical difficulty, please?
Well, it's going to be the, it's going to be the language in that where there's, which is practical difficulty. I'm old, so hardship is the old statutory language, practical difficulty is whatever they decided was the new practical difficulty.
Anne, I'm going to ask if your husband has anything to say to us?
No, I just, you know, we come into this town and we built this building with anticipation of being able to put a sign on it and operate business. I think that, you know, we're all willing to work together here, you know, and the, the letter that you're looking for, corporate lawyer, be okay to send that across or who?
Actually, the letter will, the letter will come from our compliance department.
Okay. So that's all I have to say.
So I made that motion.
I'll second the motion.
All, let's take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any oppose?
I'm going to step up as an opposed.
Okay.
And the only reason, but it'll, it's just one against, you win, right? But my point is, in opposing, is to sort of push back at the city a little bit. You're in a gray area and we made concessions and we've cut people off and said, no, you can't based on this. And you can, you know, it's this Wild West, right? And so because it doesn't necessarily, it doesn't meet purely what that is, I don't care if it's 20 years old, it's still there. And we, and good neighbor stuff, right? So the next guy comes in, we don't know them, so we look at them differently. I think there's a lot of gray area here that we're opening up ourselves for just continued issues. If this building gets sold someday and there's two tenants, wow, it's established that the next tenant gets. So I'm saying I vote against it, but I waited because there's an approval here. But pushing back at the city saying, you know, let's get our act figured out a little bit in the gray areas, okay?
Fair enough.
Because I think there are some. We rationalize an approval, but I think by the code, we didn't quite meet it and so that's where.
I think that's kind of what we did with the condition on approval that we recommend revisiting this ordinance to put a parameter in to allow for some sort of an internally-lit sign, but with some guidelines to it.
So we had a motion, we had to the vote, so now I can close the public hearing then. And the public hearing is closed.
Wait, did we check?
I don't think we ever opened it.
We ever opened it.
Oh, okay, well, I will open it up at 6:55. I will close it at 6:56 then.
Can I have a motion and a second to close the hearing, please?
Can I have a motion?
We'll move to close the public.
Okay, second?
Second tab.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so it's, I'm going to just close now. Next thing on the agenda is commission reports and other business. Clarissa?
Nothing from me, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting then? Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for being in Maple Plain.
Yes.
Motion to close.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, aye, aye.
All in favor?
Aye.